Bienvenidos a la primera sesión especial de nuestro evento. La primera sesión especial será sobre desarrollo de la financiera y investigación. Tenemos el placer de tener con nosotros al Dr. Giulapa Yechiani de la Reserva Federal de Filadelfia, el Profesor Andrei Kirlenko de la Escuela de Negocios de Cambridge, el Dr. Leonardo Gamba Corta, conectado en remoto de la Banca de Desplazamiento Internacional, y el Dr. Aaron Klein de la institución de Brooklyn. Les doy el plazo a Giulapa Yechiani por presentar la sesión y explicarnos lo que escucharemos ahora.
Buenas tardes a todos. Buenas tardes a todos, gracias por haberme aquí, los organizadores. Esta es una conferencia divertida, he estado bastante regular aquí casi todos los años. Esta es una sesión especial de la financiera y lo que vamos a hacer hoy, creo, va a seguir este plan. Daré una introducción rápida sobre la financiera y, por supuesto, si es demasiado aburrido, déjame saber que ya lo saben y puedo saltar algunos de ellos. También empezaremos el primer documento, Leonardo habrá hablado... En realidad, se hizo prueba para COVID esta mañana, de lo contrario, en realidad está en Roma ahora mismo, pero podría acompañarnos en persona. El segundo documento, Andrea, hablará sobre la financiera oscura. Luego, seguiremos con el pago en tiempo real, monedas estables y CBDC. Aaron hablará de eso. Entonces, aquí está, y luego tendré algunos comentarios, pero si tienen muchos preguntas, no tenemos que pasar por mis comentarios, solo tomamos preguntas de ustedes del plazo. Como introducción a la financiera, solo para darles un poco de fondo, una definición muy amplia de la financiera, porque ahora parece que la gente me pregunta: ¿Es financiera computadora cuántica? ¿Es financiera computadora cláudica? ¿Qué es la financiera? Y es como la definición de la financiera sigue expandiéndose. Y hoy estamos diciendo que la financiera oscura también es financiera. Se comenzó hace años, justo después de la crisis financiera, con la financiera, el primer acreedor de financiera, correcto, aggerger de datos, combinando diferentes fuentes de datos para hacer préstamos a personas que tienen un rendimiento inferior, las personas que están bajo el primer, o lo que llaman el primer invisible, personas que no son tan peligrosas pero pueden no tener una larga historia de crédito. Así que esa es la primera especie de versión de la financiera P2P, mercado de crédito. También hemos oído hablar del pago en tiempo real debido a esta fricción en el sistema de pago actual, donde es caro y lento hacer el pago, particularmente para el pago transbordario. Así que la criptomoneda, el primer bitcoin creado, no estaba haciendo muy bien como pago para fines de pago, así que hay muchos wallets e-wallets, Venmo, todo tipo de... Ahora monedas estables, y hemos oído hablar de FedNow. Debido a este Alipay, WeChat Pay, que Leonardo hablará en su documento, ahora el gobierno también está considerando emitir algo para el pago que la confianza es un ingrediente clave en el pago, así que tal vez el gobierno tiene que emitir en realidad monedas digitales. Eso también es parte de la financiera. Hemos oído hablar de DeFi, Blockchain, debido a estas instituciones financieras intermediarias que están recogiendo impuestos y bloqueando a la gente de hacer el pago, overdropos, impuestos atrasados y todo eso. Así que ahora la gente trata de evitar eso, trata de reducir la fricción creando algunas redes blockchain para que podamos tener más control sobre nuestras propias transacciones financieras. Eso es la financiera. También hay algunas otras técnicas como cómo convertir este gran número de documentos que son datos estructurados, como los reguladores SEC que podían ver a través de variascientas miles de páginas de documentos y realmente pueden ponerlo de una manera, organizarlo de una manera que podríamos usar para flagrificar para problemas de compliance o otros fines. Así que esto es todo de la financiera y en realidad se está usando en todas partes. Ahora todos están usando la financiera, es parte de todo. Por supuesto, hay algunos más convenientes, menos caros, espero, pero en realidad, según lo que hemos oído, la moneda digital comprando o vendiendo cripto en realidad no es tan barato pagar un alto impuesto a través de estas diferentes plataformas. Ahora, hay algunos preocupaciones y riesgos, correcto? La primera preocupación es sobre cómo afecta a los consumidores. La gente puede probablemente tener un préstamo si tienen un rendimiento menos... menor rendimiento, pero la información que ha sido recogida acerca de cada uno de nosotros, acerca de cada consumidor, es vasta. Ni siquiera sabemos quién tiene información acerca de nosotros y cómo se está usando. Así que la privacidad de consumo es clave, creo, y cómo se está compartiendo el dato. También la computación cláudica, y Andrea hablará un poco de eso también, sobre cómo afecta la seguridad o el riesgo ciber. En cripto, hemos oído hablar de Tera UST que en realidad perdió toda su capital de mercado de 18 billones. Solo son cuestión de semanas, correcto? Mucha gente perdió su vida, perdió su ahorro de vida. Así que hay mucho riesgo involucrado en esta criptomoneda también, aunque tiene muchos beneficios. Ahora, como regulador en la caja baja, es subte y rector, como reguladores también tenemos que adaptarnos y siempre estamos detrás de la curva porque tenemos que seguir lo que se está haciendo en la industria, tenemos que básicamente encontrar una manera de monitorear y de reglar, correcto? Aquí está una imagen de todas estas diferentes informaciones que comenzaron a ser recogidas desde después de la crisis financiera, que la aggerger de datos de la financiera se convirtió en muy popular. Y esta imagen muestra uno de los vendedores de AI que colaboran con miles de comercios e-commerce y grandes corporaciones, como pueden ver todos estos socios que incluyen Visa City, Facebook, Target, CIA, todo. Así que cada vez que vamos a alguno de estos sitios, esto es hace años, que estaban recogiendo 800 variables acerca de cada uno de nosotros. Así que tienen un montón de datos, tanto datos como todo acerca de todos nosotros. Y si usan... Son capaces de decir, en realidad, el beneficio es que pueden decir cuando... Para fines de identidad, pueden decir cuál computadora pertenece a mí, por ejemplo. Si alguien intenta ser mi... yo e intenta comprar algo, pueden decir que no es giulapa. Así que eso es muy útil, pero no sabemos cómo compartirla y repartirla y usarla para otros fines también. Así que puedo simplemente dejar esto, pero básicamente esto es solo para mostrarles cómo... No, no puedes decir que así es como se comportan los acreedores de la financiera, correcto? Porque todos los acreedores de la financiera son diferentes, todos... Algunos de ellos cobran un interés del 10% y otros tal vez cobren un interés del 250%. Ahora, además, y algunos toman el riesgo en su balance, algunos en realidad son verdaderos acreedores P2P y inversores. Y ahora también tenemos acreedores de cripto bancarios como Celsius es uno de ellos que también fue afectado por el colapso de UST que ahora está en el proceso de presentarse para la bancarrota. Así que mucha gente está perdiendo dinero por eso también. Y esta acrecimiento de cripto es bastante nueva y ahora se está usando bastante ampliamente en los Estados Unidos también ahora porque estas empresas también colaboran con proveedores de servicios de llamadas que haría muy fácil para los bancos realmente comenzar a ofrecer estos productos y servicios. Así que en un momento, escuchamos que 300 bancos comenzarán a ofrecer este producto dentro de un periodo de tres meses en un cuarto. Así que así fue así fue que iba tan rápido, tan rápidamente, justo antes del colapso de Tera. Así que se ha quedado un poco más lento ahora. Y este slide muestra cómo la financiera, que inicialmente pensamos que sería muy disruptiva, en realidad muchos bancos fracasarían, y no hemos visto a un banco fracasar debido a la financiera. Pero hasta ahora estamos viendo que muchos empresas de financiera en realidad han convertido en un banco, correcto? Vemos que Square ahora tiene una licencia bancaria, hasta ahora tiene una licencia bancaria. Lending Club es ahora una empresa de posesión bancaria. Así que ahora es la línea entre la financiera y las instituciones financieras tradicionales se está volviendo más confusa. Y también hay muchos no bancos que no tienen un charter bancario en absoluto, pero en realidad se comportan como un banco, llamado Neo Bank, Challenger Bank, que realmente podría recibir 12 millones de clientes en un corto periodo de tiempo, tener una cuenta de depósito, pero sin un charter bancario. Y hay algunos bancos que renuncian a ese charter para ofrecer, emitir préstamos que la financiera en realidad procedió. Así que todo es mezclado y mezclado en este nuevo paisaje. Así que ahora vamos a empezar con Leonardo hablando sobre la financiera usando datos de pago y cómo en realidad mejora la inclusión financiera. Leonardo.
Gracias, Giulapa, por la presentación y por invitarme a presentar este documento en esta sesión especial de la financiera. Déjame tratar de compartir con ustedes mi pantalla.
Así que estábamos pensando en terminar todas las presentaciones, pero si alguien tiene preguntas urgentes, podemos tomar las preguntas ahora también. ¿No? Bien, así que simplemente pasaremos a la siguiente presentación entonces y luego volveremos. Tengo algunos comentarios también para todos los oradores, lo harán al final. El siguiente orador es el Profesor Andrea Kirlenko. Y otra vez, cada vez que lo presento, tengo que decir que es un verdadero experto, un empresario en la financiera y un profesor también, porque en realidad encontró tres diferentes centros de financiera solo en un corto periodo de tiempo. Tiene uno en MIT, uno en Imperial y el actual está en U of Cambridge. Y aquí está Andrea.
Gracias, muchas gracias. Me gustaría agradecer a los organizadores por haberme aquí. Gracias, Giulapa, por la introducción muy amable. Así que una forma de pensar ampliamente sobre lo que es la financiera, al menos así es como pienso sobre ello y todas estas aplicaciones de la financiera que Giulapa ha mostrado a ustedes es una definición muy amplia de la financiera, es software. La financiera es software, ¿de acuerdo? Es algo en la máquina que procesa datos. Y ese software, como cualquier software, tendrá errores. Y como cualquier software, también puede ser tomado, overwritten y tomado a ventaja. En el contexto de las finanzas, tomar ventaja del software probablemente tenga que ver con el dinero, pero no siempre, a veces también tiene que ver con otras posibilidades. Así que piensen en la financiera como software, software para el préstamo, software para gestión de activos, software para los pagos y todos los problemas asociados que tienen que ver con eso. Y en ese sentido, el lado oscuro de la software es el uso de este software no como pretendido, sino para otro propósito, y no por aquellos que han escrito ese software, sino por alguien más. Y no necesariamente incluso por ese propósito o, ya saben, en el contexto de las finanzas, una de las cosas que podría pasar es, también puedes pensar, cada vez que pienso en el dinero como software y ese dinero podría desaparecer muy rápidamente, ¿correcto? Así que la financiera es software, los activos son software, el dinero es software. Y así que el lado oscuro de ello es el uso incorrecto o no pretendido de ese software, y por lo tanto, el lado oscuro de ello. El oscuro tendrá algún intención, pero no necesariamente. Si muchos de ustedes, algunos de ustedes que trabajaron con ciber o si no han hecho, hay un poco de jerga en el ciber y algunos de estos jergas que tal vez han oído es un vector de ataque interno y un vector de ataque externo. Así que pueden tomar un vector de ataque externo como alguien que está fuera de su servidor tratando de atacarlo y usarlo mal. Y el vector de ataque interno es alguien que en realidad tiene acceso a derechos administrativos a su software y en realidad cambia deliberadamente en él o se aprovecha de él. Así que piensen en Edward Snowden, alguien que en realidad autoriza sus derechos administrativos para entrar. Así que lo que afirmo es que hay tan mucha software allá afuera que tiene que ver con las finanzas, pero que efectivamente vivimos en la era de la financiera oscura. Los criminales cibáticos pueden venir como una sorpresa a ustedes, pero se han vuelto muy sofisticados y competitivos y es una industria. No son un par de individuos, estas son las empresas reales, estas fueron empresas de software con objetivos de rendimiento trimestral, con sesiones de entrenamiento, con inversores que escriben software, pero ese software ataca otros softwares, ¿correcto? Toman ventaja de nuevas tecnologías y en realidad toman ventaja de estas nuevas tecnologías a veces más rápido que aquellos de sus competidores que están en el espacio regulado. ¿Por qué? Porque no están regulados, pueden hacer lo que quieren hacer con eso, ¿correcto? La financiera oscura también es diferente de vulnerabilidades o riesgos operativos. Así que el ciber es a menudo pensado como riesgos operativos, algo, algunos errores que podrían pasar, algunos test que no pasaron bien. Esto es sobre tecnología, ¿correcto? Así que el riesgo operativo tiene que ver con la tecnología. Pero la tecnología no es solo la financiera oscura. Lo que yo afirmaría sería, y así es como cada vez que pienso en ello, es que la financiera oscura es sobre... Pueden pensar en ella como tecnología en el negocio o tecnología en las finanzas. Así que piensen en ello de esta manera. Ustedes van a oír, ya saben, han oído hablar de códigos QR justo ahora. Así que los códigos QR son una interfaz que permite que algún software comunique con otra pieza de software a través de un dispositivo externo, ¿correcto? Va a ser, no es para ustedes leer y no es para mí leer, eso es indecipherable para el ojo humano, ¿correcto? Pero la máquina podría leer de otra máquina a través de una interfaz y la interfaz podría tener a un humano involucrado en ella, quien en realidad está generando esa conexión. Esa conexión que será generada por un humano tendrá un elemento humano en ella y el humano estará tomando algunas decisiones asociadas con eso. El humano estará tomando una decisión, qué tipo de punto de venta ir y presentar ese código QR. Y lo que eso significa es que ahora hay una lógica incorporada en el software y hay una decisión humana que está asociada con usar esa lógica. Cuando combinan humanos y máquinas, tienen múltiples problemas porque los humanos son típicamente el link weak en esto. Así que eso se traduce efectivamente en riesgos sistémicos. Así que tienen problemas potenciales, formas potenciales de overtake de la tecnología, potenciales errores en la tecnología, y luego tienes a los humanos que podrían ser... que son vulnerables potencialmente, manipulables, que hacen las cosas que hacen y eso podría traducirse en implicaciones mayores, mayorias. Así que estas son solo palabras, permítanme ilustrarlas para ustedes. No en el contexto de las finanzas, sino en el contexto de riesgos sistémicos. Voy a... voy a... voy a ir al ejemplo. Un pequeño punto antes de ir allí. COVID ha hecho, ha sido un increíble aumento a la financiera oscura porque todos fuimos a entornos ciber inprotegidos. Así que imaginen al director de gestión de una institución financiera usando su laptop en casa, sus hijos lo están usando para ir a la escuela, aprender online, ver videos y demás. Así que es un entorno inprotegido, así que, ya saben, quién sabe cuántos individuos lo están usando, quién sabe qué están clickeando y es, ya saben... Permítanme decir que el fraude de pago aumentó seis veces, seis veces durante ese tiempo. Y lo que eso significa es que tienen una oportunidad de crecer en el negocio masiva, masiva. Así que imaginen que de repente vas, estás en un entorno donde, ya saben, fue difícil atraer financiación o cualquier software oscura que estés escribiendo, ahora tienes la posibilidad de escribirlo, probarlo, crecerlo y simplemente comienza a funcionar. Así que ha sido, ya saben, la cantidad de dinero que entró al lado oscuro, por algunos estimados, es estancante. Realmente no podemos ver las cantidades de dinero, pero podemos ver cómo se han vuelto las cosas profesionales. La ingeniería social son los tipos particulares de ataques que han estado en boom. Así que esto es del Report de Investigación de Data Breach de Verizon, que es, ya saben, conduce, es una compañía telecomercial que también conduce consultas en esta área. Y pueden ver esta línea azul subiendo, ya saben, ataques de ingeniería social. Así que veremos eso, nuevamente, nuestro caso no es un caso específico de las finanzas, pero es un caso importante porque va a ilustrarles, tiene elementos de aspectos sistémicos, elementos de ingeniería social y elementos de por qué necesitamos prestar atención a ello más allá de solo el riesgo operativo de la oficina de trabajo. Así que ha habido, este es el reporte realizado por el Departamento de Servicios Financieros del Estado de Nueva York sobre la investigación de Twitter, incidente de seguridad ciber en la aplicación para seguridad de las elecciones, verán por qué eso significa. Así que para ver esa fecha, 15 de julio de 2020, así que esa fecha será importante en esto. Así que en julio de 2020, el 14 y 15 de julio, un hacker estadounidense de 17 años y sus tres accomplices atacaron Twitter. Así que el ataque ocurrió en tres fases. Usaron el ataque de ingeniería social para obtener acceso a la red de Twitter. Lo veremos en un poco más en detalle. Tomaron, tomaron cuentos con usuarios o controles deseables y luego tomaron decenas de cuentos de alta perfil y tuitearon un mensaje Bitcoin W. Lo veré en un poco más en detalle. Todo esto ocurrió en aproximadamente 24 horas y los cuentos de varios individuos y empresas fueron tomados. En valor monetario, este ataque no fue realmente tan exitoso, pero demostró una increíble potencia de ataque de tipo de ingeniería social. Así que Twitter, como pueden o no saber, es una plataforma digital, ¿correcto? Así que es, tiene una presencia digital muy sofisticada. Esta es una plataforma digital nativa. Es, si pudiera pasar a Twitter, entonces probablemente pudiera pasar a muchas otras... a muchas otras plataformas de este grado de sofisticación. Así que ¿qué pasó? Debido a COVID, Twitter fue a entornos inprotegidos y así los individuos estaban trabajando desde casa y estaban usando VPNs. Y esos VPNs eran glitching, así que tenían problemas. Muchos de ustedes durante este periodo de tiempo han experimentado probablemente varios problemas de IT asociados con acceso a sus redes. Y así Twitter no, ya saben, Twitter no era una exención, así que hay gente fuera que necesitan entrar a través de un VPN. Y lo que los hackers hicieron es que fueron a LinkedIn, recogieron información acerca de dónde trabajaban varios individuos, muchos de ellos se orgullosamente dijeron: "Yo trabajo para Twitter, soy un administrador de cuenta en Twitter, tuve una carrera allí", pueden ver los profundos de las personas, pueden buscarlo, identificar a los individuos. Entonces llamaron información, llamaron a los individuos. Recuerden, esto está en los Estados Unidos, así que hablan con acentos nativos, fluentes de los Estados Unidos. Y dijeron: "Hola, estamos llamando de IT, escuchamos que su VPN ha sido glitching, ¿podemos ayudar?" Y el VPN de todos ha sido glitching, así que eso no es necesariamente, eso es muy lejos. Y lo que harían es que dirían: "Bien, ¿por qué no...? Así que aquí está un enlace, clickeen este enlace, vamos, nos dirigirán a través de este particular sitio web." Es un dominio muy similar, la diferencia entre el dominio original es que no podrían verlo con la vista. Así que necesitan ingresar sus credenciales, por supuesto, no pueden pedirles sus credenciales, así que necesitan ingresar sus credenciales a este dominio. Y lo que esto haría es que eso authenticaría a este individuo y luego la identidad de cuenta sería robada. Así que lo que estos hackers han hecho es que lo han hecho a muchos empleados porque no necesariamente sabían cuál de ellos tendría derechos administrativos adecuados a los cuentas que querían manejar. Así que lo han hecho a un significante número de empleados, digamos un diez. Ninguno de esos empleados en realidad sospechó de nada durante ese tiempo, voluntariamente registraron en este, a través de este enlace, dejaron sus credenciales allí. Y otra vez, estamos hablando de la gente de Twitter, ¿correcto? Que trabajan con software, que trabajan con administración de cuentas para vivir. Así que los hackers entraron en varios cuentos y estos cuentos son, como han visto, son llamados cuentas de blu-batch, así que son cuentas verificadas por tomar la identidad de cuenta de al menos dos administradores de cuentas que tienen derecho a realmente overwrite las credencias de cuenta. Se ha hecho en Twitter y en muchas otras plataformas para básicamente policiar lo que ha sido publicado en estos cuentos y eliminar el contenido. Así que estos cuentos tienen acceso total y en realidad pueden bloquear a los usuarios de los cuentas originales de usar estos cuentos si estos usuarios deciden involucrarse en un comportamiento que no está cubierto por la fine print de Twitter. Así que se cayó el cuenta de Binance, el mayor intercambio de criptomoneda, y secuestraron otros cuentos y trataron de básicamente involucrarse de varias maneras en las que manipular, manipular los pagos en Bitcoin. Eso no funcionó tan bien para ellos, así que se involucraron en otro tipo de fraude que es una trampa, supongo que se puede llamar. Así que tomaron los cuentas originales de Apple y Uber y algunos otros. Estos son cuentas de blu-batch, así que estos no son, estos no son cuentas falsas, son cuentas originales, actuales, autenticas de Twitter. Y dijeron: "Nosotros, la empresa, nos devolvemos a la comunidad y si nos envías tu pago, lo doblaremos y lo enviará a la comunidad." Así que esto solo va a pasar durante un periodo de tiempo. Por supuesto, ese código QR va a las cuentas de estos individuos en lugar de duplicar cualquier cosa más. Importante, han tomado el cuenta de Joe Biden en julio de 2020. Eso es meses antes de las elecciones presidenciales de Estados Unidos. Y lo que es importante es que ese cuenta podría haber tuiteado no una trampa Bitcoin doble o nada, sino algo along the lines de "George Floyd es un idiota". Y eso decide las elecciones presidenciales de Estados Unidos porque ese es el cuenta de Joe Biden, ¿correcto? Así que Twitter no reportó públicamente ningún actualizado en tiempo real. Sí encontró, se dieron cuenta de algunos de estos pasos. No sabían necesariamente qué hacer con ellos porque estos son cuentas autenticas, estos son cuentas de blu-batch, esto es su leche y leche, eso es lo que hacen, ¿correcto? Así que realmente no pueden, realmente, tienen que descubrir cómo... So you can't really, you can't really, they have to figure out how to change these credentials. And so they went into zero-trust protocol. Zero-trust protocol means that everyone, including the founder of Twitter, would sit with, in his case, typically was the immediate supervisor, but in this particular case was the chief of, chief information officer, and actually via Zoom visually be directed to change their credentials. So they will go through visual human-to-human authentication rather than machine-to-machine authentication because machine-to-machine they could not do. So they went through video conferencing. After about three hours, they were able to ensure full functionality. The causes, we talked about it, partly related to the pandemic. Importantly, was also related to the fact that Twitter actually did not have a chief information security officer. They skipped on that. They thought that it would go just fine. So when the measures needed to be implemented, there was actually no one in charge of implementing these measures. So they had to, they had to sort of scramble. It is important to have this, but it could also be overtaken, by the way, especially if that individual, imagine that individual is also a team. That team is on an internal attack vector, right? So we talked about, we talked about the fact, why it makes it systemic because it's late in the presidential election cycle and that could have changed a lot of things, right? In this case, it didn't, but it could have. So you can see how it could move from a, from a sort of back-office vulnerability in a technology platform to a systemic type of event. This is not an isolated incident. So these are called account takeover attacks. There have been many of them. You can see Twitter in the top-right corner. In the account takeover, there's a particular protocol that has been followed. The, this is increasingly done through social engineering, which is a communication, which is a combination of human vulnerability and then that gives you, that gives access to a machine and then taking over the software admin rights and then creating environments that are very difficult to find out and reverse engineer. So that's an example. I have a few more slides, but perhaps I'll end here. Still have, still have a little bit of time? Few more minutes? Right, so account takeover skyrocketed three times. So what is typically done? Some of you may have experienced it already. You know, I often go through a show of hands if you've actually received a text message that will ask you to click on something. You're a pretty sophisticated audience. Pretty much every one of you has received a text message. Very common, very common text messages during COVID-19 pandemic because a lot of people were ordering online is to confirm your transaction or to pay a customs fee or to do something along those lines. So this is very common, easily discernible. However, this customs fee may well be real. You know, it may, if you order it somewhere on Amazon, you actually don't know where it's coming from. It might be subject to customs fee. So what that would do is that they, it'll ask you to click on something. When you click on something, depending on when and how you clicked, that would generate an outgoing message identifying you as a vulnerability that clicks on something. Very likely you go into, or quite likely, if you're in a targeted group. And by the way, if you did not click on anything, that is also data. So the, this is done on a very, very large scale and there is a supervised machine learning algorithm behind it that will keep actually targeting you, if you're in a target group, with sort of increasingly sophisticated type of messages and emails. I periodically receive emails that invite me to give a keynote speech at a conference. That does not exist, but it looks very authentic. I do give keynote speeches at conferences. So this machine learning algorithm has learned that that's what I do and is now targeting me in this particular way. So until I click on it, right? And conference also would like you to click and register, all of them. And often, if you go to a conference, it will ask you to click and register and pay a conference attendance fee. All of that information is going to be collected somewhere, right? So, and it will be at some point used. It may look, it may not be used for a period of time, but the machine learning algorithm is going to use what you're clicking on, what you're not clicking on. It is going to stop actually sending you messages that you are deleting or unlikely to click on and increasingly target you.
Can I add one thing to that? So just last week, I got an email that said, "I'm getting a refund of $1,760."
Refund is a good one.
Yeah, "Click this link for more detail." I knew something was wrong and I reported phishing to the Fed. It turned out, it said, "Congratulations, you passed the test."
Right.
So employers are doing that.
Right, so there are teams that do that at sophisticated employers also, right? So they ask you to periodically, I don't know how they do it at Defend, but periodically they ask you to go through training and then they test you, how well, how well you've done in your training. But, you know, the thing that needs to be done is that eventually you're going to click on something. I could tell you that pretty much on all of you, including myself, this data has already been collected, some portion of it. I teach an executive MBA course on dark fintech and I taught it last time as a cybersecurity expert and we had a white hacker in the audience. And that white hacker was able, literally in a matter of minutes, collect pretty much the entirety of the information of the cybersecurity expert who has a pretty much very sophisticated cyber hygiene, right? So you're leaving a lot of this footprint and whatever footprint is, additional footprint is needed, you're probably going to be engineered to leave. What that would do is that it would typically, typically collect your phone somewhere in order to take over your account if you're using two-factor authentication. And then using that two-factor authentication, it will change the phone and then it will use that new phone to call wherever it needs to call to actually change the email address and that's it, you're locked out of your account, right? So that, that is a sort of very, very, very standard practice. All of you have received text messages and emails associated. Some of you have probably also received, have been subject to account takeover. So I've been subject to it multiple times. So it's not, not successful, but, you know, it's not uncommon. It's done on a very large scale.
What about hacking as a service? I have seen some advertisement that they can help you hack and it's a legitimate company.
Oh, as a service is like a long, from a long time ago. How about ransomware as a service? Literally, this, you know, so you can participate with your computing power and memory capacity in the cloud ransomware attacks. So, and you can collect fees, right?
It's not new, huh?
It's not new, right? So it's, not only that it's not new, it's, yeah, I mean, you can see where this is going, right? This is software. And so as software, you know, as long as this, as long as this could be overtaken. This, by the way, this prices have come down. This is collected by cybersecurity experts. So these prices have come down a lot. You know, let's just say the prices during COVID have collapsed. So US driver's license is now two bucks rather than twenty. So there are ways to, in order, of course, to deal with account takeover, we need to figure out how to, how to basically identify humans to machines. Because humans are the weak link. They will continue to be the weak link and there are a lot of them. And they're different. But, you know, how do you identify humans to machines? Because it's actually quite difficult for machines to authenticate humans. QR codes is actually, is not a silly idea. QR codes are typically associated with transactions. So a combination of, a combination of transaction pattern, transaction-specific and something, and something human-specific is where things are going now. There are various ways. I will, so fingerprinting, eye scanning, voice recognition, face recognition, palm dais recognition, that's a good one. So this is actually quite new and quite unique. Heartbeat authentication, we have different, we have different heartbeats. And so again, you need to take some combination of a physical human and do that. Importantly, however, there will be type-one, type-two errors there. Plus, this human could still be, are still vulnerable as a weak link. And so it will, it will probably be this where things are going. There's some combination of something that machines create their avatar of who you are and then you present yourself to a machine and the combination of the two generates a smaller error than otherwise would. Now, of course, as you can imagine, this is going in a direction where you're going to be increasingly losing ability to convince the machine that you are who you are because of, machines are going to be locking you out, saying that you're not who you're saying who you are and so forth. So there will be probably, it will go in this direction for a while and then it's probably going to, it will probably go into equilibrate in some way. The economics of this is interesting. I'm thinking about how we can capture it in a model, but I'll stop here.
Okay, thank you very much. So our third speaker is Aaron Klein from the Bookings Institution and he's going to talk about real-time payment and Qto and all these interesting hot topics.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Effman and the organizers for putting this together. And maybe take it, just say, "Good afternoon." Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, I did put everyone to sleep.
No, 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 I'm scared.
You should be.
That's, that is my Twitter handle and I just checked to see if I could still access my account. But I'm slightly terrified and you've given me a lot to think about. Let me try and lighten the mood a little bit by kind of returning to a basic definition about money. Leonardo talked in the beginning, Jalapa talked a lot, also laying out different questions. But I think we often assume a common definition of money. Leonardo said it's going digital and it certainly is to a large degree and COVID accelerated that. The definition, "Money is a medium of exchange" is the most typical one I've seen. It emanates from John Locke, who was a genius philosopher, but an economist, he was not. If you think about a different definition of money, and this is from Felix Martin, "It's a system of debits and credits that require third-party acceptance without prior party consent." Jalapa and I can have a system of trading lunches with each other and I could owe her a lunch, which is on her balance sheet. It's an asset she has, it's something that I owe her, but it's not money because she can't transfer it to Andre and say, "Well, you know, I owe him a lunch and Aaron, you take him out to lunch and we'll be even," right? That would require my consent. That's a distinction, one way to distinguish between an asset and money. Within the world of money, right, there's digital and physical. And physical money is increasingly becoming digitized and digital commerce does not generally accept physical money. So as we digitize our society, we must digitize our money and the ability to use physical money becomes more and more challenging and limited. And this brings up a host of economic and equity concerns that I'll address. Another thing about money is money only works if there's a system of payments, which I'll define as a system used to settle debits and credits. And you can't really have money without payments. It's an ethereal concept. Electronic money requires electronic payments, right? We can't settle up manually with bits. And this is, the electronic payment method is growing. So this is some data from the United States, pre-COVID. And I flagged this for a couple of things. I don't know if anybody hears from France. France shares a particular desire to have checks in the United States system. The amount of checks in the US have gone down radically over the last twenty years. But I want to point out here a couple of things. One is the use of cash is relatively, it's declining, but still somewhat stable. And there's a schism between debit and credit and electronic funds, all of which are, all of which are different types of electronic money. The big schism here is in a combination of how much a payment is and what type is used. So you'll see on the left that for payments under $10, about half are transacted in cash and that number falls to about 10% for payments between $50 and $100 and the average amount of money for each of the three types of electronic cards. Credit cards, I think we're all somewhat familiar with in this audience, and debit cards as well. I highlight prepaid cards, which are the purple slide going back. They're relatively small, but highly concentrated among people with lower incomes. And they're often types of electronic money in closed-loop systems. So in the US, it's very common to have a Starbucks account and a Starbucks card or digital money in a closed-loop system. One out of seven Americans gets a Starbucks gift card in the month of December. It's a very common office and interpersonal holiday gift. I want to talk a second for our high-end credit card system, which is very distinct from Europe and as I'll turn, is non-existent in China. The key point here, I want to flag for this mythical $100 transaction. There are a couple of key points. First is it's a three-party transaction. You have the customer on the left and the merchant on the right, but intermediating it is the credit card vendor, the payment processor, who often has a third-party bank who's also an intermediary. And that intermediation is a source of fee cost and leakage. So in this example, on a high-end card, it's about a 4% fee plus a fixed rate of 4.5% plus a 50-cent fixed rate. So that's how you get to $5 out of the transaction, a dollar of which is brought back to the US consumer in a reward. And these rewards drive US behavior and they entrench this system in a way that's, I think, unlikely to change. This is often very different. In the European context, there's often a credit surcharge, right? Because of the different legal structures and allowability, which then create the economic incentives. In the American system, what you find is lower-income people paying in debit and credit, in debit and cash, are subsidizing higher-income people paying in luxury cards. So I'll go through a scenario. A wealthy person who spends $100,000 a year on their car gets 1.5% cash back. In the 1980s, when these things were started, the Treasury Department determined that this was considered a rebate and thus not subject to taxation as opposed to income. If American Express sent you a check, you might be tempted to think, "Well, that's income and it would be taxed, there'd be a W9." In point of fact, that's not the system. Originally, this is because they were being used for points, frequent flyer miles and other reward points. Now it's simply cash and I could easily have said 2%. It's pretty easy to get a 2% card if you're wealthy. And obviously, then on a pre-tax basis, this is significant. In America, we use the term "Joe Sixpack" to mean a much more ordinary person who spends $10,000 a year on a debit card. Debit cards largely provide no rewards. In fact, to the contrary, if you're one of the roughly half of Americans who run out of money at some point during the year, live paycheck to paycheck, you can be subject to what's known as an overdraft fee. It's a $35 fee for your account going negative. By the way, your account can be positive when you charge the item. It can be created negative at settlement. There are many ways banks and credit unions generate overdraft fees. One common trick is to reorder your transactions from highest to smallest as opposed to the order of the day that you make them. So you'd be amazed if you reorder and take the biggest one out first, how easy it is to get $2 and $3 transactions that trigger multiple overdrafts. Most banks allow up to eight overdrafts in a single day. These overdrafts largely subsidize the product known as free checking or free basic bank accounts. What you find here is that overdraft fee income is the vast majority of fee income, which is by definition only paid by people who run out of money. So I can tell you it's regressive definitionally. If you have $1,000 in your bank account, you cannot overdraft. 9% of bank customers account for 80% of all overdraft revenue. So it's a very, very clustered, heavy overdraft segment. Another way to look at it is about 1 in 12 Americans pay $350 a year or more, generating 10 or more overdrafts. And this is a large source of revenue. In the aggregate, some estimates are anywhere from $15 to $35 billion a year is generated. In addition, the slow system, in Europe, your payments run instantly. Many of your countries had instant payments for quite some time. And the European Central Bank put in intra-European ECB real-time payments before COVID. In America, we have a payment system that runs on a one-to-six-day lag, depending on holidays and time of day that you deposit your payment. As a result, many lower-income people seek immediate access by turning money into physical currency. This is a form of check cashers. And so this is a recent exchange from a U.S. senator from my home state of Maryland to the chairman of the Federal Reserve acknowledging that the slow payment system costs Americans billions of dollars a year. The Federal Reserve has proposed creating a new system FedNow, which would create instant payments. Part of my research below is flagging a misunderstood phenomenon, which is people think that the unbanked use check cashers in the United States. Well, it is true that a third of unbanked people use check cashers and only 4% of banked people use check cashers. But because the U.S. is so highly banked, it is not a problem of the unbanked. When you run the math out, seven out of 10 people at a check cashing store have a bank account. Then you say, well, why are they paying $20 to deposit a check at a check cashier and a bank is free? The answer is time is money. Immediate access to your funds is worth $20 for this group of people. I posit it is because $20 is less than a bank overdraft fee, which is 35. Note, 4% of customers, banked customers, use check cashers. 8% of bank customers have 10 or more overdrafts a year. So I think there's plenty of room here for this math.
Is that why fintech now allow people to access their paycheck a few days before?
Absolutely. So that one of the big drivers here is in the U.S. system, if your paycheck appears in your bank account on Friday, it's been taken from your employer on Tuesday. And between Tuesday and Friday, it rides the payment rail. And the bank knows what you're getting. And so many banks and many employers are now saying, well, you can get access to that money on Wednesday. Similarly, when the United States government sent out the COVID stimulus payments, the information was sent from the Treasury Friday, April 10, but money wasn't available to people till Wednesday, April 15. And if you had an emergency, right? 1 in 4 mothers were reporting their children were hungry because work had shut down. What are you going to feed your kids over the weekend? A few fintechs, some of the neo-banks that you had on your list.
Right, Time is an example that actually reached 12 million customers, opened 12 million deposit accounts for people without having a bank charter by partnering with Bancorp Bank. And so basically all the deposits go to the bank's balance sheet, but they collect a lot of fees.
So they give everybody access to their money on Friday, April 10, so they could eat over the weekend. So I've talked a lot about America. Leonardo talked a bit about China and backing up to some of it. This is some of the explosive growth in Alipay and WeChat Pay, the two dominant Chinese big tech payment firms that used a QR system as opposed to the magnetic stripe plastic cards that are in most people's wallet. And you can see the kind of hockey stick explosion. The Chinese system is better, cheaper and faster. The funds move electronically between your digital wallet and the retail digital wallet instantly. There is no transaction fee. And a series of data and information is gathered that may, according to Leonardo's research, provide greater access to lending and other credit decisions. This is very different than that tri-party system I showed you before, where up to 5% of the value in that hypothetical example. My oldest friend on earth from the first grade owns a coffee shop. And one year, he told me he spent more money in credit card fees than he did for coffee. That was the cost of his doing business. By the way, it's important to note what my friend pays in credit card processing fees is a lot more than Starbucks. Large corporations negotiate their credit fees down with private bilateral contracts with Visa, Mastercard and American Express, while small businesses pay the full freight published rates. So in this way, this system also creates a structural disadvantage to small businesses as well as a different system. I think China was in part able to create this leapfrog because merchants largely refused the original use of the card-based system, citing the fees. And China was largely a cash-based system. So let's kind of talk a little bit now about fintech. And start with the idea of crypto, which is non-state money. And again, money is simply a system of debits and credits with the ability for third-party acceptance without prior party consent. Largely in history, this was confined to providing money from being chartered by the government because only the government could provide the certainty of the ability to add to your system of debits and credits without prior party consent. Cryptocurrencies offered what they would consider an alternative system to do that. A second form of new money is central bank digital currency. In this idea, the central bank, which previously only provided currency money to customers in the form of cash, all other forms of digital money were actually private bank digital money. And now the question is, can the central bank offer a digital form of money? And I want to drill in on that because, you know, this has become known by the acronym CBDC. And the world already runs on CBDC. Commercial bank digital currency. That's what all these cards are. That's what every electronic transaction is. Now, you know, they're alternative, they're non-bank digital currencies. Venmo and PayPal can have digital wallet. But I think it's important to understand that often people discuss the benefits of CBDC by starting with the benefits of digital currency. Digital currency is widely available. The question is, it relates to a central bank digital currency, is what is the marginal value of replacing the commercial with the central? And what are the marginal costs to the financial system? One big argument is financial inclusion. There I have to ask the question, okay, what type of access to central bank digital currency is going to be cheaper and more inclusive? Is the central bank going to provide the direct account? In which case it can subsidize that account from a variety of other revenue sources available to the central bank? What does that mean for the commercial bank? And who will determine the magnitude of that subsidy and the targeting of it? Will it be universal? Will it be means tested? How deep will the subsidy go, et cetera, and so forth? Without the central bank, without a direct account with the bank, then you have an intermediary. What is that intermediary's cost of doing business? And why will that overcome the hurdles that already exclude people out of the financial system? I think these questions, to my mind, have not been adequately addressed in most of the CBDC conversation. The second element of CBDC is control of the data, control of the monetary system. This is a big desire. And I think this best explains China. China's rolled out a CBDC. I argue China's done this not for financial inclusion purposes. Alipay and WeChat, you saw their explosive growth earlier. It's because China and Alipay and WeChat aren't banks. Chinese technology firms in the private sector took over the allocation of money in society. And the Chinese government wants to return that to government control and to bank-driven control. Witness what China's done with Jack Ma and Alibaba as a whole and Ant Financial. And I think that's a very different explanation and structure. Let me, I have a little bit of time left and I want to talk a little bit about policy solutions. I think the movement to real-time payments is the single biggest available policy lever in the United States to promote income equality without raising taxes or increasing spending. You've already seen some of this thanks to the pressure of FedNow coming online and decisions by large financial institutions. Bank of America is eliminating 97% of its overdraft fee, which was over $1 billion a year alone just for one bank. I think Europe has a better credit card system. In the United States, there was a challenge to this. It's not widely known. The state of Ohio passed a law empowering merchants to turn down some cards. So you could turn down some high-end Amex or some high-end Visa. The contract from Amex and Visa says if you take one of our credit cards, you have to take all of them. And so this case made it to the Supreme Court. It was decided five to four, one of many bad Supreme Court decisions recently, in my opinion, on behalf of Amex and this disempowered merchants. The IRS could change the definition and reallocate some of the tax advantages as the long amount of economic literature shows, particularly in the provision of healthcare in the United States. When you provide a tax-advantaged way to distribute money, more money goes there than otherwise would be the case. Or you could regulate exchange rates, something that was tried as part of the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Act, known as the Durbin Amendment. But the literature on the effect of the Durbin Amendment is mixed at best, I would say, in terms of reducing costs for merchants versus simply subsidizing big merchants. Let me close with one other element that I've not touched on, which is DeFi, distributed finance, which is talking about essentially eliminating the middlemen. And this Professor Kate Judge of Columbia University just wrote a book looking at middlemen and arguing not just in finance, but in other aspects, our economy is structurally moved to greater roles of platform creators in situation. And DeFi promises to eliminate that and create that to be direct. In the world of finance and fintech, they talk about programmable money. And they highlight a set of instruments and contracts that are relatively expensive that simply are there to ensure money is allocated between parties. And they say, well, we can get rid of this by programming it. But Andrea's point is who controls the program? What happens if the software is corrupted? What happens, you know, who is the intermediary? I'm somewhat skeptical that the core underpinning of the financial system is trust. And you have to trust someone or something. And they say, well, you can trust the program. Why is the program more trustworthy? And what makes the program inherently an advantage? So I'm skeptical of DeFi's ability here. But I do think there's something to the idea. This is a photograph I took last week. I was walking through the streets of San Francisco. And this is a merchant store. And the store is just a front. And it's on a DeFi chain. And anybody can essentially run the store on a contract. And so we call them in the United States pop-ups. They're very kind of common. But you could just have the store for three days. Or you want the store for every Thursday. And this type of retail structure, right? Before, you'd have to rent a store, you have to sign a lease, you have to be there for a year. Now they're just opening up to a platform on a set of payments and blockchain, et cetera. And that's a structural change in commerce. I'm not saying everything's going to look like that. But in a shopping mall, when you have one or two, if people can directly communicate to their audience, come to my store through Instagram or other types of means of exchange, can't the merchant change in a different way? And is a DeFi underpinning, an accounting system done? I hope you can see in the very bottom, I had to laugh. They then said after this, oh, the closest store for the NFT conference in New York, indicating that the entire merchant community of this in San Francisco, which would be the most tech city savvy, they're all going to be at a conference. So we know no one's coming here for the next week. Made me kind of pause and wonder exactly how big this market is today. But I encourage you guys to think about some of the alternative structures in fintech that may be transformative, but on the tech side of it and the structural economic side, less than necessarily the finance or the financial intermediation side. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Any immediate questions? If not, I wanted to actually talk a little bit about Leonardo's paper. Yeah? Aaron, can I have? So how do I change this? You have to put the, so it is actually very interesting that we all know that China, which was the Bitcoin mining was mostly there. We knew it and it was banned. And then it moved out of China to other places around the globe. And then China also, soon after banning Bitcoin mining, they also banned all crypto-related transactions, right? Because we know that WeChat Pay and Alipay, actually, everybody was using it. You don't need a bank account. All you need is a simple cell phone and it's widely used, popular. So Leonardo's paper, it was talking about this QR code, right? QR code that's used for real-time payment and that produces information, good information, that could be used and allow business, small business owners to access credit from this Ant Financial or my bank. Now, this morning, I was chatting with Leonardo and so is that still going on? Can it still be done? Because see, if Alipay and WeChat Pay actually are now using government CBDC, right? Which is now replaced all this e-wallet. What would happen? Is the result still valid? So Leonardo actually explained to me quite well. So I think he should probably say it himself as opposed to me repeating it. So what happened and what kind of information can still be collected through this QR code using the CBDC, Chinese CBDC?
So let's say that the payment market in China is pretty much concentrated. The two major big techs, Alipay and WeChat Tencent, they have 94% of the payments into their market share. And CBDC, in a way, is another channel that the Chinese authority would use to increase also competition in terms of payment. At the moment, just to make a little bit more of the point on the situation about the data. So the PBOC already have the division of the transaction data because all the transaction data from 2019, they go into a particular central clearing system. And therefore, I don't think that central bank digital currency is an additional way to, you know, to have a look at the data on private consumers or entrepreneurs. Because de facto, they could, in a way, already see this transaction because this central clearing system is a state-owned and there is also proportion of property of the two big tech. But I think that the central bank digital currency is mostly introduced in order to boost competition in the payment sector. And it's actually now a very well-established. boost competition in the payment sector, and is actually now a very well-established private, sorry, pilot CBDC that reach a lot of, a big portion of the private system. I think 200 million of the Chinese, they use already CBDC. And this is a digital representation of money, so different from what Aaron said, that is a commercial bank digital currency, that is always a nice parallel. CBDC is a digital representation of money. So this means that technically, from an accountant's point of view, it goes directly into the liability side of a central bank. And when I use a central bank digital currency, the payment is final. So when I pay something and I give my bill to, I don't know, to Aaron, for example, the payment is final. So I pass that bill, and there is privacy, because apart from bill, nobody can understand my grocery habit or other things I buy. And the same concept should be applied with the most evolved central bank digital currency. There is, to protect consumer prices, there are ways to do this, and this is called Zero Knowledge Proof System. And of course, it's technologically feasible, it's cryptography. So this means that we can use central bank digital currency also considering elements of privacy, as today with cash. With cash, there is not a record of our transaction. QR code in China, just to come back to the original question by Murapar, still used, because this is something that they use through the wallet. And since 2019, there is a rule through which every remevive into the wallet has to par with 100% reserve into the PBOC or a commercial bank that is authorized by the PBOC. So it's a sort of a narrow bank. So this has nothing to do with cryptocurrencies and stable coin, because it's, I would compare this as a sort of a narrow bank. And the benefit for the Chinese system are visible in terms of financial inclusion. And of course, we could have similar benefit with central bank digital currency. Again, with the parallel of the commercial bank digital currencies, of course, a central bank digital currency does not pay any fee. So while with a credit card, we have a payment of a fee, well, the merchant has to pay, as we know, the one who buys the groceries or the goods does not pay, but then the vendor has to pay. And therefore, central bank digital currency would be a way to reduce this cost. And there are elements, of course, central bank digital currency is a part of the solution, but could be, you know, also, we can develop, in many jurisdictions, they have already done, fast payment system that have a lot of similarities with very good central bank digital currencies retail. For example, there is the fast payment system developed in Brazil, the PICS system, that has developed just recently, one year and a half ago, and over one year, two-thirds of the population started to use PICS, and the cost of a PICS transaction is 1/10 of a credit card. So this means that not only central bank digital currency can be used, but also fast payment system can add on top of their usage as a layer, function that are very important, and they come from decentralization of finance, it is programmable money, smart contract composability and so on.
So Leonardo, is it correct that, so at one point, Ant Financial, because people keep the money in their e-wallet, right, with Ant Financial for Alipay, so actually it became the largest mutual fund in the world, right? At that time, because when everyone keeping a lot of money there, and they were actually were able to get some interest as well, but now with the CBDC replacing, now WeChat, it's the same rail, but it's now CBDC?
So the People's Bank of China introduced several pieces of regulation. The initial one were mostly because of elements of, to contain a potential risk in the system, and therefore, one element was to not allow to the big tech to use the float and to deposit the float into a commercial bank. So what happened is that was the following. For example, as a user, I deposit, you know, some of my money into the Alipay wallet, and I get an interest rate that was quite good, because the big tech could park the money daily on a commercial bank and get a very good interest rate. So in a way, there was, you know, a split of this interest between the user, the consumer, and the big tech. But in 2018, there was the introduction of a rule from the PBOC that just stopped this, and at the moment, a big tech has simply to park the money in 100% reserve deposit with the central bank, or as I said, with a commercial bank that is authorized by the central bank. But this is not remunerated. On top of this, there was also another rule, that because the Chinese user, they were accumulating funds into what is at the moment, even at the moment, the most relevant and the largest money market fund, it's called Yobo. And they did this, you know, in a very active way. Every day, they wanted, you know, to use a part of the float to go to the money market fund and so on. So the PBOC introduced some rule that then, actually, they were somewhat lifted, to stop the movement from the float to the money market fund, because there were limits in terms of how much money market fund part of my wallet I could use to do some buying. For example, if I had to buy a TV set, of course, I need more money, and, you know, I needed to take a little bit of money from my money market fund to the float. Initially, this move was immediate, and then, you know, with the introduction of this rule, there were some limitations in terms of how much money I could invest and so on. This because this money market fund was incredibly large, and there were some potential risk of, in terms of run, you know, because then the money market fund is also invested in bank deposit, and therefore, a run on the money market fund would have been similar to a run on the bank, or simply systemic relevance consideration, because the money market fund was too big. But still, the owner of Alipay Wallet or WeChat, they can use the wallet to allocate money, you know, in these different forms of payment. One thing that could be interesting, just the last one, every user has a possibility to order their list of payments. So for example, when I have to do a payment, first I indicate, first I want to use the wallet, just the float on the wallet, then the bank account, then the money market fund, and then other forms of investment, credit portion and so on. CBDC is another form of payment through which I can, you know, I can park, you know, a portion of my money. And it is also used through the wallet of Alipay and so on. It is a digital representation of cash. And imagine you have a wallet, so you have a note in your wallet rather than, you know, rather than physically.
Leonardo, this being a panel, I agree with 98% of what you said, but the more important, you know, the more fun thing to do is just push back on one thing you said and then just add one. The credit card fee is not just paid by the merchant. It is paid by people who pay in cash and debit. Because in the US context, right, the cost is fixed. Right here in Europe, if I give you a more expensive Amex, you can add 3% to my bill if that's what it costs the merchant. In the US, you can't. So the economic cross-subsidization of that by requiring a fixed price has the merchant set a price a priori, knowing the payment instrument. Because the high-end payment instruments are restricted by definition only to the wealthy, then it is inherently...
I think that we are 100% on the same page, because I was simply unprecise. I mean, there is obviously a tax shift, as the way you are mentioning. It is that formally, you know, maybe is the vendor, but then there is a tax shift also on people basically pay by cash. I agree 100%.
So we're in agreement there. The other thing to point out on Ant Financial, particularly from the merchant's point of view, is there is often a fee to downstream from the Alipay money from the merchant into their bank account. So the consumer pays nothing to upstream, but the merchant can. On the other hand, the merchant can leave money in the Alipay digital wallet and buy other services from other merchants on the Taobao platform, which creates a very structural incentive to leave that money and keep shopping, much like in Amazon. If Amazon in the US context could figure out a way to keep money up on the Amazon account, it could reduce the amount of fees. A different slide I didn't use in this presentation posits the life of a person who does home renovations in the United States. And I can show that roughly about, depending on the assumptions you use, 10% of that business's after-tax income can be driven by rewards from a credit card linked specifically to one of the two major home furnishing goods, Home Depot or Lowe's. And if you have that card, then you're essentially bound to, the economic incentives to only shop at that store become incredibly compelling, which then lead to questions of price and economic competition, particularly when you start looking at stores or platforms that have such a high market share and penetration, particularly in the online environment. So it's interesting in the sense that some of these products can create new, unlock new economies of scope. And then you can ask the question, is that good for society in driving a more efficient system? Or is that pernicious for society in reducing the effect of competition? And I'm not sure where on the two I come down, but you certainly see factors in both.
So just to conclude, I think it looks like, even with CBDC, this QR code that's being used for payment, lenders are still collecting information. Even though it was CBDC, they still have information in the QR code that can be observed and can still be increasing financial inclusion, right? And this is kind of similar to what PayPal and Square collect as well through their platform. Is that right? Yes, no?
Is this for me?
Yeah. Just half a minute, yeah.
For example, just to, I will respond, just telling you that we are, you know, this use of the QR code and the behavior of agents on the float is very similar to what we'll see in the future on the behavior of agents on a central bank digital currency. And therefore, the study of the float and the way the portfolio is allocated, as we discussed, is very important to understand the digital, the elasticity of digital money with respect to income, interest rate in the future. It's very interesting what Aaron said, because actually, the float does not move too much, and maybe because of the use of the fees. So for example, if I want to maximize my return, I could take a part of the float and put it into the money market fund. But if there are some fees, then if I have to return from the money market fund to the float, of course, there is some resistance. And this is what we have, what we observe, that the float is pretty sticky. So it's an interesting consideration, and of course, we need to investigate more the behavior of what we can call the form of a digital money demand.
Okay. Any questions from the audience now? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. That was really interesting. I have a question. What system is most vulnerable then? The dark net, you know, are they exploiting mostly? You said Twitter, is that only in America, Europe? Is China at all subject to this attack? And if not, why not?
I had a slide on there that I was pausing on, that this is a very common occurrence. In the Western world, with the independent media, we're more aware of these occurrences than in China, because they could just simply ban. So we don't know what happens, at least I don't know what happens in China, but software is software, you know? I mean, there are vulnerabilities in the software, though. They'll be exploited. The way to, interestingly, if you are using your phone, then typically, your phone is encrypted. So depending on what logic is, so your desktop is much more vulnerable than your, or your laptop, you're much more vulnerable than your phone, interestingly enough. So if you're using, if you want to, there are particular rules of cyber hygiene, if you want to protect yourself. The rules of cyber hygiene when you protect an organization, the rules of cyber hygiene that you protect a society. So, but in all of these rules, there will be a combination of, there will be a combination of, you know, sort of exploitable humans and software that could be exploited as well. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but...
What about iPad? Is it like a phone?
iPad is an iPhone, yeah. Yeah, so that, so typically, what it's, I would tell you this. I teach a course on dark fintech, executive MBA, so there's a middle-level career individuals, and they have access to various things. As a group access, I ask them to see, to investigate what are the most vulnerable parts of their digital sort of profile. And it's not uncommon, but they discover that a very, very vulnerable part of your digital identity is your calendar. So your calendar has a lot of things in it that you may or may not want to keep around, and also has links if you have invitations. So these are just sort of parts of, okay, she's writing things down, to go and clean up calendar. But, you know, for example, one way that vulnerability could be exploited is you typically have admin rights, or you typically have access given to you, which is pretty stable. But sometimes, through your calendar invites, you're given temporary rights that actually could be exploited to a much larger database.
Anything else? We are over time, but if there's one quick question, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. My question is for you, Leonardo. I just would like to come back on your, the first bullet point, your conclusion. So if I understand correctly, so a corporation have more chance to receive a loan from, let's say, the bank if she use QR code transfer, right? So I'm wondering, I mean, at each time, there is a payment using a QR code. So this is a news on the credit risk of the corporation, but also mechanically for thousands of clients of this corporation. So there is an accumulation of information for the high-tech bank, an accumulation of information on the credit risk of all these counterparties and all these clients of the corporation. So under this perspective, I'm wondering, because there is this terrible reduction in terms of informational asymmetry between the high-tech bank and so many economic agents, I'm wondering if the loan is not just a reward for providing so much important information?
Well, it is, the loan is a financial service that arrive into the provision of the entry of big tech into finance at a certain step. So at the beginning, big tech, they enter, you know, doing payments, then they provide asset management. And then at a certain point, when they have sufficient data on the vendor or on the user or the consumer, they can, using this data with machine learning and big data application, create a credit score. This point with the credit score, they can... This point, with the credit score, they can offer a loan. But the offer of the loan, yes, it's good, but you know, I can also decline the offer, I cannot use it. What the paper just shows is that when I use the loan, I basically give a signal in terms of my footprint into the financial system, because I am visible from banks. And then at a certain point, banks will recognize my existence, and they will start to offer me financial services. So the short answer is that the accumulation of transaction data via the QR code allow, combined with non-traditional form of banking, to create a credit scoring. Credit scoring gives the possibility, not the obligation, to have access to loans to these small vendors. And then the small vendor, by using these loans, have two, this has two effects. First, they will reinforce the flow of data to the big tech, but they let also the bank a signal, they give the bank a signal, that these firms are eligible of getting a loan from the big tech. And therefore, it's a sort of a certification device for the bank to give credit to the small vendor, be a restaurant or a shop. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We are a lot, you want to, is that done, right? No more question, right? Is there one question there? Okay. Thank you very much for staying with us to the end. And thank you, panelists, all the speakers. Good job.